Seven thirty, Columbia Beach, Road Hall.
Look.
Here.
Matt Vidner?
Here.
Hopkins?
Yeah.
Trantham?
Here.
Sharon?
Here.
Alvin?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
Look?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
The rest of our agenda items by sponsor. Changes. The approval of minutes and trips are amended, we have a motion. Huh? So moved. A second?
Second.
Matt, changes. Updates for Michelle. Road Hall.
Rob?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trantham?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Motion path. Six petitions versus some non-agenda items. Anyone? Yep. Number seven, the reports and communications from the mayor and other state officers. Report to trailer. That's in the pack for the city. Of course, there's four for Brad. We have a motion. Make that motion. Here, in a second. Seven. Road Hall?
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trantham?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes. Motion path B, report of collector budget officer. We have a motion. General, I'll be in a second.
I'll say it.
Kyle. Questions for Sarah? Road Hall?
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trantham?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Motion path C, report of subdivision and zoning commissioner.
Report is in the packet.
Thank you. Any questions for Roberta? D, report of Billy Inspector, county commissioner.
Our reports in the bag, man.
Thanks Brad. Any questions for Brad? E, report of Deputy Director, public works.
A quick report, Mayor, regarding West Bear Street. The road will be closed on and off all week this week as the contractor received their storm sewer pipe and structures. So they'll be open trenching across the road in four spots and running up the south side of the street, putting in the pipe this week.
Very. I noticed in going down Moore Street Detective Day, they were bringing their pipe across a lot of gravel on Moore Street.
Okay.
Motion is that resolved.
Okay. We'll look into it.
Mayor, any mail?
No sir.
Reported Director, public works.
Most of you are probably aware by now, we had another tornado yesterday. Touchdown in the south end, just really into our city limits. Did not receive significant damages in Old Monroe County Electric today. Will be at tree limbs, some trees now. So no injuries have been reported, but Tim Chaggy this morning. So that's good news and we fair, fairly well overall. Also, we have two small wing and power outages later this week in Morrison Avenue. And Four Street area, it's on Facebook, so those may play out, it just might have to delay those for weather.
You have a case that goes out there?
Yes, we can deliver, the line crew can deliver to residents and they also mailed them.
Anything else? Thank you very much. G, report of Chief of Police.
No reports, not there.
Tell me this. Report of City Attorney.
No report, Mayor.
It's all okay. Report communication by the mayor. Number one nonprofit grant program check presentation in Martin's Sports Association in an amount of five thousand dollars for their project, Safety Shade Net Project.
We got, always got something to do, I appreciate you.
Probably always have.
Oh yeah, definitely have a lot.
Thank you, Eric.
Want to say anything about the project?
Well, we originally planned on having a netting over the protector of Bowballs. So we got that up. Original plan, part of it was to have the shade, which we put the pads in where the bleachers are at. And then our, the bid that we came in with, or the shade was fifteen thousand dollars, so it was kind of over, over our budget. So we didn't do that, we did do, we already, part of our money that we got was for the shade, not for the shade's net, and also for the concrete pouring. So we're gonna, we got another net project, we want to do that, J C Fields where the playground is at. So we always have all kinds of properties to do. We're trying to improve the property and the fields and it takes a lot of time and takes a lot of volunteers. And we get a lot of support from organizations within the community and all the sponsors that we get throughout the year for our team. So I appreciate everybody that helps out with that organization. It's a big, I've been in it for twenty-five years now, so it's been a lot, a lot of improvements over the years. But grants like this really help out.
So instead of one of you, you got to do a great job.
We appreciate it. Okay, thank you very much.
And number two, they want to, Cory's the work at the Board of Police Commissioners for a three-year term to expire May first, twenty-eight. I don't, Cory is not here. I had a conversation with him four or five months ago, asking if he would like to be reappointed. He, he agreed and we're glad he's in heaven. Number eight, report of standing committees. Sorry? Oh, yeah. I'll have a pass read for you, sir.
Look? Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Hopkins? Trantham?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Thank you. Report standing committees. Report of special committees. Ten, presentations of communications petitions, resolutions, orders, and mortgages by Hollerman. A, consideration action of order number nineteen oh three approving an annexation agreement between the City of Wardle, Illinois and Allison Bosch, A V Metro East Property LLC in regard to attractive land comprising approximately point four six acres, more or less contiguous to the corporate boundaries of the city of Waterloo, Illinois. Will accommodate it all at seven fifty-one North Market Street. We have a motion, make that motion. Ross, a second?
Paul Simon.
Tina? With a committee meeting part of this?
They gave, they gave the planning committee to discuss it.
Road Hall?
Rob?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Sharon? I'm sorry. Vidner?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Motion approved. B, consideration action of order number nineteen oh four approving an annexation of property owned by Allison Bosch, A V Metro East Property LLC for attractive land comprising approximately point four six acres, more or less contiguous to the corporate boundaries of the city of Waterloo, Illinois. Will accommodate it all at seven fifty-one North Market Street. We have a motion. Ross, a second?
Paul Simon.
Tina? Obviously the same property. Road Hall?
Rob?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trantham?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes. C, consideration action of order number one nine zero five approving wholesale connection agreement by, by, between City Wardle, Illinois and L O M District Electric, Page C I D A and Amherst Services company on behalf of and as visiting agent for Amherst, Illinois. Company, we have a motion. Sharon, we have a motion. Kyle, one second?
Paul Simon.
Tina? I don't care, it's going to you. You, okay.
This is the wholesale connection agreement that presented the utility in the last committee, the sixty-page documents. That we don't have currently. C, do you review it? I mean, review it. Do you, does it require anything new from us at all?
It does not.
No new paperwork or nothing, just this. And I noticed it lists the three pads and the two turbines, so when the third turbine comes alive, that's a, that's correct.
Any other questions? Road Hall?
Alvin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Vidner?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trantham?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Motion path. Eleven, unfinished business. Twelve miscellaneous business. A, consideration action, increase of monthly household charge for traction, recycling pickup to nineteen dollars and eighteen cents beginning May first, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion. We have a motion. Here, in a second?
I'll say it.
Ross?
So the current rate charge she's, each household is eighteen seventy-seven a month. And my sanitation is proposing a two point two percent increase of forty-one cents per month. So with this increase, the total monthly household charge will increase to nineteen eighteen per month.
And that is less than what they could have increased, correct?
Correct, yes, they could have increased it by three percent.
Forty-one cents.
Yes.
Any other questions? Road Hall?
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trantham?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes. Motion path. B, consideration action on approval of signing of an engagement letter between the City of Wardle, Illinois and Mathias, Mayor of Fenn and Richard, L T V attorneys at Law. We have a motion. I'll make that motion. Kyle, in a second?
I'll say it.
Matt, this is an agreement that the city has with this law firm, handling our suit between the City Department and Columbia. And this was approved in executive, in our last executive session. Road Hall?
Alvin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes, Tina.
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trantham?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Motion path. C, consideration action on special event permit application from the American Legion of seven forty-seven for the L O M program. Be held on five twenty-six twenty-five from ten A M to twelve thirty, and including the street closure of Main Street between Thurs and May. General, I'll be in a second?
Say it.
Here, obviously this is our annual, uh, Road Hall?
Alvin? Trantham?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Motion path. D, consideration action on approval of Limlaw Construction Company as no bidder for the combustion turbine number fourteen installation as bid on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at two P M. We have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Tina, in a second?
Say it.
Ross?
We opened bids last Tuesday. I'm a little bit surprised at the bids themselves, forty percent over the indigenous estimate. I asked representatives from V H M G to be here tonight along with the contractor Limlaw. If anybody has any questions for them. We're, we're working through the value engineering, some of the items. I'm just, I'm applying as to try to come up with some costs maybe, yes. For boom, or, or, or. We have to do the projects. Yes, that's true. And it's the only bid, is my understanding? That is the only bid. We have a team of Limlaw Construction, J L Electric, Icon Mechanical. Those are, who are preferred in the industry. Yeah, and we have to do it, you know, we have this, I, I don't know how we listed by that much, so hopefully the next time we do it, we'll be closer, so we're not surprised, but. Why is it forty percent over that? They're one and a half million over. Okay. Four, four million was the estimate that came in one five nine nine, I think.
I mean, it is considerably above, above the estimate. We have talked about this hackling. V H M G, obviously the, their estimate was about a year old, a little over a year old. May or may not account for a portion of it. But again, we're kind of under the gun here in order to get these projects finished and we're getting the credits.
No, I said, I, I get it personally, it's just, all right, I guess, I don't get it. I understand, we have to do it. We're getting I N E credits, I mean, we've got turbine, these are all things that are going at one thing, so I get all that, so just next time, how do we? How do we not get surprised like this would be what I would hope for. So we had quite a few bidders after the lockdown, and it's just, some of the bidders, they weren't interested anymore. I think some of them obviously teamed together, that they're, I'm just surprised now that's what they're. Sounds good.
Any questions, concerns?
How much of the delay, if we were drafted at, because of the increase, how much of the delay would that put on program?
That's where we could, that's what we can live with.
We need to have the turbine commercially available either this year or late next year. And that's the most scheduled, it's on, on board with that.
And that's set from I N E A?
Yeah, that's set so we can be on the auction boards in order to get the credits. Going later this week to get final board approval from I N E A, so we can move forward with program. That's right.
And like you said earlier, that some of the initial companies, you thought they were bidding or cheering together.
That's correct. We had another, another contractor that was under their, I guess their threshold, the contract now.
So they had the same people coming together?
More than likely, yes.
Thank you.
But we'll continue to look at value engineering with the team, see if we can figure it out.
Road Hall?
Sharon?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trantham?
Yes. Motion path. E, consideration action, in action, in second, Department of Investigation application from Tony Grove, Jaal, located in L O M, both markets, here. We have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Tina, a second?
I'll say it.
Kyle. Tina, we have, who's patient being part of this?
Yes, and they're being approved as red on the year application.
Any other questions? Road Hall?
Sharon?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trantham?
Yes. F, consideration action on approval of the Deer Ridge subdivision for a limited flat. We have a motion. Make that motion. Here, in a second?
Second.
Ross? Comments?
Deer Ridge subdivision flat is gone through planning commission, planning committee multiple times. They've gone through it and have come to an agreement and will be just affordable.
Any other questions for Roberta? Road Hall?
Look?
Yes.
Look?
Yes.
Matt Vidner?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Trantham?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes. Motion path. G, consideration action in executive session for the review of minutes esper five pile C S, twenty slash two, C twenty-one. And for discussion of contract relating to the transmission of electricity, five pile C S, twenty twenty slash two, C twenty-three. We have a motion. One minute. Matt, in a second? Dan? I'll be, I'll lose a finger.
I, I chose out that seven forty-nine.
So is that association ever part of?
Yeah, that is legal.
Yeah, I want to shake your hand. No, I mean, everything.
Okay.
Thanks for asking.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. See you two weeks.
All right.
Well, Matt, thanks for remembering, I forgot to give you.
Excited. I have to keep you in the job. Thank you.
Thank you.
We ask about you through people. Just like, all right, guys.
All right.
It's better than, not me. But no, no, it's good.
Okay.
So.
I'm working on, uh.
Oh, the permanent plan?
So. Four or more weeks, I don't know.
Oh, that'd be good. As soon as you get something, we'll hit it hard.
Sounds good.
Since it's small, it's not as.
Not too terribly bad.
It should be a hard one as well. Cool, thanks, Matt.
All right, thanks.
Next meeting.
Another, another question. Report fifteen years.
T G S reports. You know, I saw the street through there.
Okay.
So they. Yes and no, I think the street, I don't know, we see some seepage from around the pipe. They put the pipe and you grow the gas concrete. So they seal. Around. A big problem would be a collapse of the pipe. There's no, there, there. When I went out there last week, I was expecting to see a hole. I took a picture of this. I mean, I have no problem fixing a leak or whatever, it's no big deal. I got, I got two of those. It is.
Ross, let's, hey, I've been here for two weeks. This is really making me like, here, I go shampoo on my clothes, I just call, you know, it's funny. My dad was, you know, the same over there.
On Morrison? A block. A four hundred. I drive it every day to meet the school. You can speed, you hit thirty, it's per, it'd be a very, it's time.
Thirty-five maybe on a good day, you know.
Not when there's almost traffic. Yeah. The twenty-five is fast. Yeah. Like in a residential.
Yeah.
If you're standing next to the road, it seems fast. You put the carts back now.
Yeah.
She brought the new boat, she was. Why do they keep them so low?
I just don't want to hit your cars like that. But she did, we had one thing, I was like, can I give you a statement? It wasn't as far, put it everywhere twice this, April first and then that day. And she was like, someone hit the inspection over headline and knocked it down. That was like. Yeah, I agree, that probably shouldn't be happening.
Like. I think the line was too. Well, I don't know.
I think those sixteen foot. Yeah, well, they're, I can tell you it was by eyesight there, they're playing, I was gonna gas them, at least. You know, it's like, so. But, yeah, some most farm equipment doesn't pitch up that high. He saw it, it was the mold, it was one full of blaze, or one of those one.
Full of blaze?
Pulled up with a spreader. It depends on how, I do, that they were at, that they were coming through there, and I'm like, oh, I agree, but they gotta go somewhere, come on, this area are marked.
I, I don't know what the, I don't know. And those are for farm equipment.
Everybody takes their farm equipment through there.
Yeah.
We, we do it all the time.
Yeah.
It's that, it's that intersection at Fourth Street, 'cause you drag and tear up pavement. That's why, that's why we've avoided it. Well, there is so many, there's so many damage to the roadway.
There we go. So right there, you see now with, I don't forget, I can see through the wire.
There'll be something else.
Oh, sure. She just made it up here.
I think she worked, she worked, it was signs out, be like, you can't handle double acid tray or what and stuff, I'm like, I don't know if you can do that.
It was like.
I mean, you can put, you can put a weight restriction in that, then you gotta.
Yeah, but they're not tearing up the road.
Well, yeah, they're not doing.
The only thing is.
Who's monitoring that?
Yeah. The, the, the complaints, the complaints.
Yeah.
I know that they're only being at one stop sign, right there. It's kind of the only downside, 'cause I mean, if you don't see nobody, it stops on, if there's a stop sign. There's my eighty still in that second house, I think it was a stop sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's, there's a general consensus for every.
That's exactly right, that's what I was saying.
Okay, that's all.
You know that thing called the book ordinances?
Yeah.
It's a great thing, you know. You know what I do? I used to.
Give them a copy of it?
No. You get it online, you can't really do it on your phone, you almost have to have it on PC. So it doesn't, American legal doesn't work well on cell phone. But you just type in a surf word, it pulls up, that all those words up in the book, it's easier to, you know. That's how you can get well ground quickly, something like, type something like feces, you know, or, or. Fowl, you know, you're like, come on, where, you know, pigeons are alive, type in. But you gotta know which key, you know.
How much key word is up there, like pigeon, Nancy, that one.
See, like landscape, you pull, pull the zoning code on landscape offers between commercial and residential. See, like landscape, you put, pull the zoning code on landscape offers between commercial and residential, like, you know. And then you'll find stuff that, like me, if I do it, I, I find stuff on my phone. I didn't know there was this such and that pertaining to, you know.
So my aunt said, cause she used to humble Jane right there.
Yeah.
She said the city. Always charged a hundred dollar fee to remove seven things. But they had to be removed, she said they were never kept there.
The city charged them?
Yeah. It was probably for the demolition permit, it's the only thing I can think of.
Yeah.
Because normally what Jane, what, what, what they would do is they would, they're gonna be getting demolition permit to remove. The tank.
So Jane and Jake can remove tanks and everything?
Yeah, they'll come in and remove them all.
They're a good company.
Yeah, they'll pump them out.
They're a real good company.
The only reason why she retired.
That's a good, good company.
The only reason why she retired was because of. She and her mom, she moved her mom over here from Florida, it's got to be too much. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't keep this, I wouldn't keep them back there. That's just another problem we've had.
Keep what back where?
The seven tanks when you annex those two properties in.
Oh, and he's. And like, there's a fine line between. No, it's not a hard line, if you're a developer, you pay for that stuff, but. Whoever buys that, cause we can, we can force them in and make them pay for the sewer body. For, for.
I love Joel's name, sometimes people like to steal his stuff, yeah.
But. When, when, when you're in a situation like that, that's not right to make someone pay for a name that they're not.
So you probably get water from them. You'll get a sewer from them, the only thing you probably don't get from them is water.
They probably don't pay you the bag.
But at that point, you probably can convince. Amber.
But I'm, I'm pretty sure it's monorail electric.
She probably couldn't even convince. I mean, they would probably give it up considering it'd be annexed, that'd be one less thing they'd have to take care of.
And they, yeah, I.
Cause if it's monorail electric, they'd take care of everything to the meter.
Yeah. I have a lot, I have a great relationship with monorail electric, so. I would never do some of the stuff.
Yeah, I just sent any guys over their way last night. They were in some dust.
They moved pretty good last night, was that their poles on one fifty-six? So, you know where I live, I, I mean, it was, it was, it was good.
Not far from the farm right there on Covered Bridge, that's where it was right through there. Our farm's right on Martini Road, the cop road.
Okay, yeah.
So, I mean, we were too far off the path.
Not at all, not at all. It's crazy. Yeah, I drove, I wanted to check it out. Thank, thank goodness S and P didn't get it, they don't need any more step backs.
That shed, there's a shed across the street though that went over.
I saw that.
I was like, man, I'm excited, cause there was years ago, about probably thirteen years ago on G road, first section of G road. There was a guy that built a barn. He built this big old shed and he's like, you know what, I can start building this, just put all the sticks up and I don't have to put a plywood or tin on the side. But in all reality, tin's what keeps that building together. Sure enough, a big old storm come right through there and blew it. He had to re, he had to rebuild it here four times, he, he built right in the middle of March and April. In the worst time to build a shed.
Racing goes a long way.
She said that a house like in the car ran into.
Yeah.
She put a GoFundMe. Unfortunately.
They're, they're nice people.
I'm like.
I don't know, oh, yeah, that's a GoFundMe type of thing. Hey, whatever. Deductible.
Deductible.
Who knows? It's hard to. How fast can you go down hill?
Pretty fast.
Especially in the middle of the night. Waterloo sure known for vehicles going. On the run, it's had two of them. Walmart's had one, but I had to.
The one that. Was on Columbia, uh, on James. Went across Columbia and just smoked that house. It was so bad that it buckled the shingles on the roof.
So that's why they're.
It racked it so hard, it erected like six inches. Kind of, I was in, I, I went there, went there following a few days. Yeah, it just, it racked the whole thing, so even the sheathing on the roof racked, the shingles buckled. It was crazy, they had.
I had to fix that.
How was one of them? I hope they do some attention decently, certainly looking after it.
The last time that Brad and I. Looked at it, it's been a little bit. I mean, I went to like all the. That type of business, I went to there, Roundy's Place, Iron Crafters. Those are three comparables and. All three places had. Vehicles, tires, or. It, it was hard for me to, no, I mean. Right, aesthetically, we want round three to look as nice as possible, but per code.
That's what mine wants to do.
If you're gonna pick on one, pick on one of them. And I really, at that time. I didn't really see one that was better or worse than, they, they, they were just kind of. That's kind of what I expected in like an I won type of news, so. It's hard, it's hard to, right.
I mean, I understand, like they got that wind truck out there and they got no hood, no engine, no bumper, no nothing. I mean, I, I wouldn't go as far as telling them they have to remove them, I would go as far as. They're here for sixty days, they'd be on. I mean, cause if you can't repair a vehicle in sixty days and.
I can't do anything more than what the ordinance allows me to do. So. Let me think about that. Or, or property maintenance on. Like, um, the attention. So. We could theoretically. If it's broken down, they, they can fence, there's screening that would allow the junk vehicles to be in.
I don't know, we counted up the history before. Being in industrial use, they.
They got some leeway.
They got some leeway, oh. I don't know, that's what I talk about the stainless, putting on some kind of screen. That's what we're gonna try to do. Cause like you said, if you read for industrial use, you could have a vehicle dismantled. Or repairs, I think you read through something like that.
That might be the silver lining. If you could say spend three months and you gotta repair it.
That's where I'm going, you know, how many days does it take to repair a vehicle, I mean, I get that if they've got. Solid proof to say like, hey, this part's on back order and it's not gonna be here, then yeah, so be. But for a vehicle, so they're not ending.
Right.
Or a hood.
And that's where we, we wanna look into it, because we do, I think we have that maybe going on.
But we'll just do all of them up at the same time.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean, give them a, give them a, hey, you can't, this is what you should be doing.
Yeah, yeah. Come on, guys, you're better than us.
At least fence what you can see from the roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, those fences are. Then you got another maybe it's thing that we.
No, if you do that, but if, if you do that, then you gotta make it to the protocol.
Yeah.
Right.
It would have to be chain link.
Right, let it blow over.
Yeah.
And you tell them to maintain that.
Yeah, then there again.
Ten storms a year, it blows up. This last one we had, Henry also told us, there's not there.
Don't let it lost trail, believe me. Street over.
Yeah, I seen that on Facebook today. I know, up by where I live, couple years ago, man, there was one like way out, it feels like it was great distance, you can see it, and it landed out there perfectly. And I was like, it just seems like a quarter mile away, like off the road, I don't even know whose it was. It was like way out there in distance, then over there, there was one up in the trees way. Yeah, you gotta wait your man to tell him. Damn parachute sitting there waiting to take off.
So last night, like when sirens were off, Henry said, you know, the basement. Tornadoes. It dies down, it probably, you see it coming, like, this is like, the front's coming in.
I would see a tornado coming around.
Then I'm, I don't know, did they actually list it as a tornado?
Yeah, it was EF one. Went for seven miles.
So that's what took the whole one out, I guess, out.
That's the one that missed my house and his house, or my farmhouse and then his house.
Cause it's like. I was, I had, had a door cracked open and I'm like, this, this is getting, this is awesome, you know.
My wife walked outside, the mother lost car, door. She was eating outside for two seconds, she come back in here and she's like, it's pouring every one direction out.
Oh, it was pouring. About that time, then I lost electric, so.
There we go.
See, we didn't lose electric, that's Florida, lost electric. Cause I was watching on the cameras after we left there.
Yeah.
I still have a tower on the camera, so I didn't lose electric.
And there's still people out this morning.
That lady in Floridale, she posted, she was still out at eleven o'clock this morning.
Yeah, I'm out sick of these storms.
Another three weeks of waiting, yeah.
It's funny. Do you tell me those? It's funny, I told, I text Jay yesterday, I was like. Now the hatch is, they don't have a whole lot going on. So, case something happens with the water plant, it's. It's still so new, you know, we, we don't know. You don't know what's gonna happen when you get a huge storm, and what we gotta do is. He's like, oh, yeah, nothing happened.
Here we got lucky on the first one, I think, just missed the water plant down there.
Sure did. That whole, that whole line of utility poles will go down.
They're so curvy, it's. It's one gut.
Fifteen degree angle, every pole, cause all those years of that wind blowing from the west.
Yeah, they're disalts.
They're all leaning.
Yeah.
So.
I was surprised they didn't put all that underground.
I know. I know. It's just so horrible there.
Apparently Columbia's in some three degree F shape over there about my road.
From what, the road itself?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome house, man.
I don't know what I would do, I mean, that's.
It, it's, it's gonna be a bunch of money, we'll regret closing. They're gonna, they can't close it, cause there's people's houses on the other side.
Yeah.
Then they got their pump station right on the other side of the, of the bridge deck there.
You're right.
So I mean, they, the only way is you have to move the whole entire road over. They've been trying to mess that though for years, they just keep. Been seeing the one picture, you just see they just kept layering it with asphalt, it's like.
Some of them are pretty fresh, I was like, hell, that's even dried yet.
I mean, they did it four times last year. They finally closed it this time because somebody almost got killed. I mean, everybody traveled their road.
It's a busy road.
They said three sinkholes opened up this weekend, the same thing, it was long, it was twenty feet deep. It was.
Yeah.
It was an old, old sewer something, you can see the old bricks and stuff. It was twenty foot.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, they said an old, old heart, your old service collapsed and things, three massive ones, it's just like, that's twenty foot holes, they're like, oh. I'm driving along. Yeah, you look, you look good, you can see the brick, like. I was like, is that cobblestone? Well, that's a sewer.
That was real cool.
Yeah, you see like the grate, I was like, did it just pay more cobblestone, that's what it looked like, it looked like just like a layer of asphalt over. They said that's one of three that opened up just this weekend.
Yeah. I was downtown Friday. There's a group of white girls, they were all at the insomnia place off Washington. They're like. They were, they must've been from Taft, you know, from out of town, they were in St. Louis, it's like. How many people out here every night, and I'm like, sirens are nonstop around here.
Good times.
It's just a welcoming prayer.
Well, it was. About a year ago, there was a girl that was in for a volleyball tournament, and she got, ran over and sandwiched twenty car and lost both of her legs.
Yeah, that was like, that two years ago.
Yeah, that was two years ago. Hated it all because he was. Drag stripper, that's what they thought. Hall Street's the same way.
It's got. You're trying to stay out of there, watch your safety.
Yeah.
I mean, when it's in New York, it's kind of wild. That's wild. That's fast pace.
Go to Baltimore. Can't even get across the tracks for the trains coming. You can't even walk, it's like so populated dense over there.
It's crazy. On freedom air.
It's America.
America, heart of America. Soul. Soul system. Oh, yeah.
I thought it was gonna be a quick one.
It was going great.
You know, everybody said they didn't see that, uh, the old stump, the stump piece distillery. Until they put that water line in, across the road, it said no one noticed it, till they put the water line, they're like, why are they going across the road? They know starting to look like. I mean, you really can't see it from the road.
It's hard to see.
Yeah, I didn't notice really until I, I've been along there much either.
Yeah, I don't really go north too much. And I try to get water in.
Yeah.
It's touching my tattoo.
And I got, isn't one of these like, my wife's dad, she goes out, there ain't water, I ain't gonna get.
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting to see how it play out, Florida, Florida Columbia.
It'll be interesting.
Especially in the slumming down match. I know why I were worried about fighting, I just didn't go.
Yeah, I, I think it's worth the fight.
It's worth the fight, actually.
Uh, you look at the smaller picture right now, it's probably not worth the fight. When you look at, when you look at the growth.
That's when you'll say, I wish we had that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's alright.
That's the thing, if it really is alright.
There's a couple agreements from the nineties, probably more older than most of the national statutes.
Even that, I mean.
I just don't know, I didn't agree with actually. Cause if you ever change, if you ever change or modify your plan, that the agreement's modified, then it's just.
Or something.
It's interesting.
That's where everybody has that issue with room.
Really?
Well, even, so there's, there's, they're so far apart, but the way that it worked was Red Bud is gonna take over all the utilities. Because they share the same thing. So basically Red Bud would be responsible, even though they were, they're still at their own utilities, Red Bud is still responsible for those utilities. So a utility department takes care of. And no, there was a guy with a beer Columbia. You know.
Yeah.
But it was also a lot smaller.
Yeah.
But then Ellis Grove is like, well, we can take care of the utilities more closer. But it was one of those things that was closer by half a mile, but then the zip code over there.
That's interesting.
So I mean, it's not much moving, you know, it's still, you have to come.
Got some water and. Pulled over my pullover. I guess everybody's got the memo to go be a police officer.
What's that?
Everybody's got the memo to go be a police officer, though.
I don't have that memo.
I was talking to the major of St. Clair County. He said he's been on the park for thirty years. He said that he never been full staffed. And he said that the mayor this year thinks they'll be full staffed.
Really?
He says they're only about three or four guys short, all the time, which is St. Clair County.
So we're shot at eighteen. And it's ready, it's full. Somebody's on with injury or whatever, so.
Sometimes I'm like, boy, we got a week from now, and it'll be. We'll be inside. Oh, really? Some Mexican got ran over in their car. Oh, yeah, that's right. Blaming the damn, and the police officers throughout this.
They seem to get hurt, I mean, every time. They seem to get hurt, I mean, every time. It happens.
I don't know if I could work to this, if you got. I could go take a warning. County down, I probably could. I'm gonna, I'll go for state.
It's like, who's county?
There you go, you're underpaid and at work. Doesn't, like, he lives hardly, like, why would you buy water?
There was thirty, there was three guys that came from St. Clair County. Came to Monarch County, got a ten percent raise. Then they went back to St. Clair County, said you're gonna be ten percent more, I'll come back, and they got a twenty percent raise, just by switching departments.
Geez. Playing the games.
Yeah.
Cause the ISP is. A lot of these departments couldn't compete with ISP, cause they always paid, paid their guys more. And then you get paid to go to the academy. So you're already ahead of them.
Uh, motion to recharge the, uh, uh, session. Here in a second. Going back in, in, uh, session eight twenty-one. Number thirteen, discussion of matters by council members, Marley, Patrick, Jim, and Ted, Lon, Joel.
Uh, I guess this is your last official one.
Yes, yes.
It's been an honor and a privilege, and, uh, I'll be a stranger, see you out about somewhere.
Oh, I'll be over there.
Good deal, congratulations. Great time in his home, and I said, it was a pleasure.
Oh, just by your words, you know, uh, as I go down the highway, and I pass scooters, I'll always thank you. You're the one that brought up that motion for brick.
There you go.
And I thought it was out of bounds at the time, but I've been to other cities like Braves and Jerseyville, and seen their scooter. And they don't come near the nicest that we have here in one of them.
There you go.
So you've given me something to hang on, and I'm gonna thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And I also want to commend you for your work as chairman. You chaired some very interesting committees, and you've done a very good job as chair. So take that in stride. I also want to just tell you, you know, if I lived in your ward, I would certainly vote for you. So take that as a compliment, you've done a good job, and thank you for serving the city.
You're welcome.
Same way, I, I've been able to work with you as alderman, and when I was chief, we worked together when you were the zoning guy. Was very thankful then, because we were having to do the citations for grass so red inch and some other fun things. When you came in, you took it over, and I deeply appreciated that. Move on to other things, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Future, future retirement.
Right, right, well, thank you, thank you. I, I just wanna say that.
He's okay with you.
Okay. He gave you the nudge.
Okay, yeah.
It's, it's been a, a, a real pleasure to, you know, be the alderman for Ward War and represent the residents of this country. It is a great experience doing this, and it's because of all of you. So, thank you.
And Russ, I echo everything that folks have said, it's been great being your neighbor twice. Um, it's been great serving with you, and, and just being able to, to ask questions, get a little guidance, insight, information, it's great, very appreciated. Despite you winning this role, um, so it's very appreciated, and I think Ward War has benefited greatly over the last eight years. And so, thank you for your, for your service in the city.
Here you are. I would act on everyone, everything that everyone has already said, I have relied on you heavily, uh, as an alderman, and also in the last two years, I, I value your advice. I was not necessarily happy that you weren't moving on, but understand that that was a decision that you made. Again, I would certainly evaluate your input on anything after you're voted on, but yours always opens you here. You got right on. Okay, thank you very much. Motion to adjourn.
So.
In a second. A little bigger eye?